Today, Mary. Now, thank you for making time to be with us.
Please bow your heads and pray with me. Heavenly Father, we're grateful to be able to gather this day. We do ask for your blessing on this meeting. We pray that you would bestow extra wisdom and strategies for the complicated situations that arise in our city. We also pray for anointing and blessing over our department heads and all the city employees. And God, would you also rise up just a sense of excitement and enthusiasm in our citizens to embrace the opportunities that are ahead of us? God, we just appreciate that we have health and that COVID is on the decline, and we thank you for our city leaders, and we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mary. Now, join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then council, if y'all don't mind joining now, probably have two proclamations. So if you're here, Kristin, are you here? Yep, there you are, right there. We would love for you to join us up front. Kristin Wolbach is from our Parks and Rec Department. Whereas May 21st, 2022, is the 12th Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. Whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. Whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hyperchlorestomeia. That's a big word, Kristin. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will bring forward the importance of recreating, I'm sorry, recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council members of the City of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 21st, 2022 as Kids to Parks Day in Amarillo, given under our hands and seal of office this 10th day of May, 2022, signed by the whole city council. Kristin, you want to tell us more about this?
Do I need to hold this? Yes. We can sit down. Okay. I don't know, do I just? Okay, cool. Can you hear me? Maybe? Okay. So we're excited about anything that actually gets kids outdoors. Obviously, I have five kids, and I love them being outdoors for a number of reasons. It sparks kids' curiosity, makes them tired, but more than anything, it makes them their own creative thinkers. And I think that kids, when they experience the outdoors, they care about the outdoors more. They become stewards of our resources. And so as a Parks liaison, I'm excited about the opportunity to acknowledge that kids should be playing outdoors. You know, I know as a kid, I spent most of my time outdoors. I think that was by benefit of my parents. But I remember, like most of you, that we stayed out until the streetlights came on. And so this is a great opportunity to get kids out, to remind them what we're doing. I just want to say first and foremost, thank you to our council for recognizing our capital needs and putting more emphasis on improving the infrastructure in our parks. And that's going to look like 14 new playgrounds in the next year. Our athletic field lighting is seeing some much-needed love, as well as some other capital needs are being addressed. And so that will just continue to keep the kids out in the parks, outside, outdoors, and hopefully continue to grow their appreciation for what the outdoors has to offer. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Frida Powell, Mayor Pro Tem Frida Powell is going to do our next proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. And if Lisa Hancock is here and her group, I invite you to come up and join us as I read the proclamation.
We brought a big group today.
Awesome. Love it, love it, love it.
We're the second kind of kids.
Yes.
We're kids.
Yes. So you're going to fit right in with councilmember Howard Smith and myself, because I'm reading this proclamation on behalf of us.
That's not a bad first round.
All right. Whereas our city includes a growing number of older Americans who combine their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. And whereas we recognize our need to create a community that provides the services and supports, older Americans need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas our city works to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, and increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now therefore, we, mayor and city council members of the City of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 20, 22, as Older Americans Month in Amarillo, and urge every resident to recognize the contributions of our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts to support older American choices about how they age in their communities, given under our hands and seal of office this 10th day of May, 2022, the Honorable Mayor Ginger Nelson, councilmembers Cole Stanley, Frida Powell, Eddie Sauer, and Howard Smith. So I'm going to invite Lisa to come up and say a few words.
Thank you so much, Frida. You're most welcome. We are so glad you're coming Friday.
I will be there Friday. Absolutely honored to do it.
So I do represent the Area Agency on Aging, because I am. And we all are. Even those kids we were talking about are aging. You know, you start at birth. So I'm from the Area Agency on Aging, and we are celebrating Older Americans Month on Friday. It's Good Friday, right? The 13th. Good Luck Day.
It is.
Friday, the 13th, will be at Region 16. We are celebrating the annual theme is Age My Way. And I thought that just really screamed talent show. So we're having a talent show this year, and it's always fun, because the contestants compete, and first prize wins $500. So we're making it worth their while. And if any of you would like to enter the competition, you have to be 60 or over and have a talent.
I'm all in.
Okay. We're going to put you on the list. All right. We're going to put you on the list. And then we're having lunch provided by the Craig. We have enchiladas, and we're having breakout sessions, so you can get it all in one day if you'll come to Region 16 on Friday, the 13th. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I want to thank, I'm sorry, I want to thank my colleagues, the ladies from AAA Area Agency on Aging. This is Carrie, our director Sunday, and Catherine, our operations coordinator. And then we have April Hernandez from the Adult Protective Services, and you're not who I thought you were. Jeff Witzel over here is from the Amarillo Senior Citizens. So I thought he was standing over there.
That's okay. He's an older American citizen, too.
That's right. We're all doing it. We're all doing it.
Take a picture. Good job.
Thank you.
It's official now. It's how we do it.
Are these real? Are those real?
Listen, talent show starts at 1:00. Okay? Y'all heard it already.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. A dear friend of many of us passed away last week, Tom Bivens, and his funeral starts at 2:00. And so I would like to do a couple of items of business here and then take a recess, so that those of us on the council that would like to attend that service could show our respects to the Bivens family and be present for that service. I see that the school district is here. Canyon has an item on our consent agenda, and just out of courtesy for their time, I'm wondering if it would be okay, council, if we go ahead and just do the consent agenda, and then that won't leave them hanging while we recess and go to a funeral and come back to finish the rest of our agenda. So just maneuvering, navigating today a little bit. That being said, anything that needs to be addressed on the consent agenda, questions ahead of time?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have a motion with regard to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Everyone in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Consent agenda items pass with a 5-0 vote. Then I think what I would like to do, we have 15 minutes, council. Jared, discussion items. You think we can do the recap of Earth Day and get all the way through that discussion agenda?
In 15 minutes?
I think we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's then what we'll plan to do, council, and then we'll recess and come back and do our action agenda. Okay. Dr. Fluschi, Heather, we appreciate that you're here today. We appreciate all of the work that the district is doing to take care of kids in our city and in the city of Canyon. We're partners in that mission. So thank y'all for your work.
And I took a picture of y'all and sent it to some big fans of y'alls, so just so you know, just to let them know that y'all were here.
Okay. Donnie, let's do item 1B, discuss recap of Earth Day.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Excited to bring you a presentation today about Earth Day. We had some high expectations going into Earth Day. We took a few different approaches going into Earth Day for some lessons learned when we had the National Day of Cleanup in September, and we were right on target. But I want to give credit before we get into the presentation to the citizens of Amarillo who really showed up at this event, and what we had set as a goal, we shattered it. And it was thanks to them. Number two, thanks to our communications department, they rolled out a communications package that was just awesome, even talked me into getting inside of a dumpster and popping up out of it, which I can look back on it now and say, I couldn't believe they talked me into doing that, but I did it anyway. But what they did to put the message out, and then what staff did to show up as well and put the extra hours in to make it happen, was really great for us. So we go through this. The first slide here, just talk about what we had as far as equipment. The 24 new roll-off containers, thanks to you, this council, for approving that back in October. It has been already a success just with one event, and we look for many more ways to use this. You see on the picture there, this is what we decided to do this year, is place them in all four quadrants on Earth Day, like we did in September, but the difference is that we platoon them all. We grouped them all together. As you see in this picture, there's four of them lined up next to this park here, and in every location, the six locations we put them in, we grouped them all together instead of putting them out separately in single containers. In the first event, we had, of course, we were using a republic roll-off, but we had probably about five of them out of the 24 that had items in them. This time, every roll-off container had items in them. So we think we nailed it there, thanks to the East Ridge Group who suggested that, and then as we looked through that, we decided that was the way to go. 24 roll-off containers, we had six knuckle boom trucks, three rear loader trucks, three brush trucks, and 37 employees on the city side of that to work in the alleys, to work with the brush trucks, in conjunction with what we were asking the public to do on Earth Day on the 22nd. We actually did this all week long. We started on Monday, and we took it all the way through the entire week. That was another lesson that we learned. We couldn't keep up with the routes during the September run, because there was just too much out there to do in a day or two. So we did it for an entire week. Every route that we projected to complete, we did. So that's the equipment that we had, and we started looking at the numbers. Just wanted to tell you what we did as far as the roll-off dumpsters. These are the 24 that were out. These are the numbers associated with that. We had 8.3 tons at San Jacinto School Park, 6.6 at the Southwest Library, which really surprised us. We thought the Southwest Library would probably have the least amount, because there hasn't been as, the last time they were empty, completely empty, never had anything in them over there. Bones Hooks had 3.3 tons. The East Library had a ton and a half at East Ridge School Park. Big numbers there, 8.3. They had a large volunteer group out again, working in that area. And then 6.6 from Thompson Park, and that was a very organized event that the Parks Department had, that added another 6.6 tons to our event, so they had a lot of volunteers show up for that as well. But just if you look at these individual numbers on here, the last cleanup, we had a total of a little over 11 tons collected for the whole roll-off program. We had almost that at one location this time. Next would be a, and by the way, I meant to mention in that last picture, that was some of our hard-working people. I was going to try to identify those and point them out. That's Robert Hernandez in that last picture that's with the roll-off truck there. Just want to show you what it looks like when they load one of those up, too, and put it on the trailer. That's our old truck. We have the two new trucks that are going to be here very shortly. The next picture has some other hard-working employees. Scott Tillery running that truck right there, along with Devonte Hardaway and Nick Renteria. They were working very hard that whole week to get the neighborhoods cleaned up in the alleys with that truck that they're using there. And you see what we collected as far as the city crews were concerned. 25 tons in East Ridge, 31 in North Heights, 89 in San Jacinto, and 10 in the Barrio. And what's kind of alarming about that is we went through a complete cleanup in September, and we got all of that, all of it. And here, we've already regenerated again. The good news is, the innovation team is working on just that. One of the key pieces that they're working on is communication, because obviously, when we look at this and say, well, we just cleaned the whole area in September, and now we, or all of these areas, all four of them, and now we've already generated this much, the word's just not getting out. The public needs to be educated better on that, and they're working hard on that and that innovation team, and I think that's going to be a great addition. We're going to see those numbers go down. So here's the, my favorite piece that I did for, just for Howard, is back to the Volkswagen graph here. These are our total numbers. We had our 24 containers, we did 34.8 tons, or 69,600 pounds, as opposed to 11.9 tons in September. And then our personnel and equipment did 156.6 tons, or 313,200 pounds, as opposed to 60 tons that were done in September, for a total of 191.4 tons, or 382,800 pounds, 72.6 in September, so just over double what we did in that first event. We've learned some things. 95.7 Volkswagens is what we collected. If you look at the weight of Volkswagens, like 3,900 pounds. So that's our presentation, just to kind of, again, just give credit to the citizens of Amarillo who showed up in big numbers. Obviously, or we wouldn't have the roll-offs full, and our staff are doing all the hard work. And if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Good question. Good job.
Thank you, sir.
What'd you learn this time that you think will make next year's Earth Day cleanup better?
Repeat that, I'm sorry.
What'd you learn this year that you think will make next year's better?
You know, well, we learned that it works to group them, for one thing, and I think that the other lessons that we learned were getting out ahead of it a week ahead of that is going to help, and we may even expand that out a little bit. And we're also probably going to expand our routes. What we got done in one week in those four areas could probably be, we could probably add a couple of areas to that, just by expanding that out to a week. So, you know, more than anything, we compared it to what we did inch by inch in September to this one, and we just did a much better job. We're much more efficient in this and getting it done. And by the way, I might throw this in there, too. You know, the sanitation drivers that are driving these trucks, they also have sanitation routes they have to run. They have other duties that they're, you know, splitting. Some are in a trash truck one day, some are in a knuckle boom one day, and they're all very willing to do that work and get out there and do it. So that's another thing that we learned this time, was we really put them to the test, asked them to do a little bit more than what they normally would, and they responded to it.
So are communications different this year than they were last year?
Oh, in this event, communication was unbelievably, you know, not that we did a bad job the first time.
No, I understand, yeah.
It's just Joy coming on board, she really took this thing and ran with it, and was calling daily and saying, what can we put out now? Can we put this information out? You know, and was just really on it. So hats off to them, because I think that that was a big key to making this successful, just people knowing about it, which then gives me some positive thought going toward getting the message out, too. They have a crew that understands how to talk to the community and get a message out. So I'm excited about what we're going to get there. When you combine their effort with what the innovation team is doing, I just, I see it getting better and better. We're going to, our goal was 80 tons, just so you know. You know, we just, we killed that. Yeah, we killed it. So we're going to, that's another thing we learned, Mayor, is we're going to make our goal a little more harder to reach next time. I think we can, we can do more.
What would you ask of citizens going forward? Not just on the next Earth Day, but in general? Do you have an ask towards citizens?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we've asked this, but I, what I would ask is that the less that they, the more that they help us with the illegal dumping issue that we have, the further we can take these events, because we have less to do, so we can make them stretch further into the community. And with the ultimate goal being to clean all of Amarillo, and it's quite a challenge, but I think that's what I would ask them, is just help us, continue to help us with the illegal dumping issues that we see. Report the things that you're seeing out there. Let us know about it. Let us know where you have troubled areas where people are repetitively illegal dumping, and then that helps us when we have a big cleanup day like this to be successful.
So as a citizen, what I hear you saying is, don't put your trash in the alley beside the dumpster.
Correct.
That's point number one. You can use the curbside pickup number. And number two, as you do see trash besides your dumpster, to call the city and get it on the alley cleanup list.
Yes. We are actually to kind of tag on to that, and I don't want to run y'all over, so.
I'm watching. Thank you.
Confident of your time. The message we're going, those roll-off containers don't have a message on the side of it, if you go back and look at those. We're actually putting logos on there now. This came, this event happened before we could get it done, but we have logos, and we're putting a simple message on the side that says, "Do not place items next to your dumpster in the alleys." It's just a simple message in bold letters on there that will continue to promote that everywhere we put this out, that it's okay to put them in there, but don't put it in the alleys next to your dumpster. And the curbside collection numbers are big time. We're, we saw 900 requests, like in the third week of April, and that's a lot compared to what we normally see. So I think the message is getting out, just continue to help us with those items.
Great. Any further questions for Donnie? Okay. Donnie, thank you. Please tell your crew how much we appreciate the work they do in the city.
We will do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, at this time, I think we will take that recess, and we will plan to convene here around 3:00, as a loose estimate of when that service will be concluded and we could be back. At this time, we're recessed. At this time, we're recessed.
And we will pick back up. Item 1C, do we have any requests for future agenda items or reports from the city manager? Hearing none, let's move on down. We've already done the consent agenda, so on to our action agenda. Item 3A is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7977. Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mayor. We've created a number of reinvestment zones recently. Here to discuss another one is Kevin Carter with Amarillo Economic Development Corporation. Kevin, welcome.
Mayor, council, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is the consideration of reinvestment zone number 17. This would be located, I think Jenny's going to put a map up. Sorry, I may have given them to you in wrong order. Just put the other map up.
There you go.
What she's putting out, it is located in the vicinity of US Highway 287 and Interstate 40 west of FM 1912. And so it's all that property, really basically left of the 287 sign there. It's about 1,000 acres, 1,108.7 that are proposed for reinvestment zone number 17. The reason you create a reinvestment zone is to allow the taxing entities to give an incentive, like a tax abatement for a future project. This has to be posted seven days in advance, and we have complied with that. And this would be a manufacturing facility that would, that would be considered at a later date to go in this reinvestment zone.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Kevin about creating this reinvestment zone? Okay, thank you, Kevin. At this time, we will open a hearing for anyone present who wants to speak for, on, or against item 3A. Anyone present who wishes to speak? Hearing no one, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7977, which designates a zone of the city that is approximately 1,108.70 acres in the vicinity of US Highway 287, Interstate I-40, and west of Farm to Market Road 1912 as reinvestment zone number 17 for commercial and industrial tax abatement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 3A. Any further discussion or questions from the council on that motion? Okay, hearing none. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the motion passes with a 5-0 vote. Moving on to item 3B is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7978. And, yes, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, this is another reinvestment zone, and you'll wonder why Kevin didn't walk away when that item ended. He's got another one to present. Kevin, take it away.
Yeah, an exciting time to be in Amarillo, so with the reinvestment zone creations. This reinvestment zone is 539.8 acres located at US Highway 60 and Parsley Road. You can see that property is kind of basically north of, or the top part of that above Folsom. I don't think, let's see if this thing has a pointer on it.
Yep, there you go.
It does, but it doesn't work with those TVs.
Yeah, perfect.
Oh, it's Jennifer moving it, okay.
Okay, she's got a mouse. So in that area right there, there's 539 acres just to the west of Parsley Road that's being considered for this reinvestment zone number 18. Also, a manufacturing facility will be brought up at a later date to go in this reinvestment zone.
Any questions for Kevin from the council? Thank you, Kevin. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on item 3B for anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll close a public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7978, which designates a zone of the city that is approximately 539.8 acres in the vicinity of US Highway 60 and Parsley Road as reinvestment zone number 18 for commercial and industrial tax abatement.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor pro temp and seconded by Dr. Sauer to approve ordinance number 7978. Any further questions or discussion on this motion from the council? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that item passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3C is consideration of ordinance number 7979. Mr. City Manager.
Sorry, couldn't get that to turn on. All right, Mayor, thank you very much. We've got Emily Kohler here, Assistant Director of Planning, to present the item. Emily, take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here with another neighborhood plan implementation project. As you know, by city code, property owners are responsible for maintenance and repair of damaged sidewalks, and the San Jacinto neighborhood through their neighborhood planning process identified a potential cost share program as a high priority project, in part due to the poor condition of sidewalks in the neighborhood, and then also knowing that those improvements would be a burden to a lot of the lower income households in San Jacinto. So the ordinance amendment, as it's drafted, is applicable to the neighborhood plan areas only, and funding must be made available for the program to be active. And so right now, the San Jacinto plan area would be the only active funded program, and the neighborhood association has allocated $200,000 of their neighborhood planning initiative money to go to this program. Other neighborhood plan areas could choose to do this if they wanted to. There aren't any plans right now, or if the city receives some grant funds or another funding source, we could run around that would be open to all the neighborhood plan areas. The participation is completely voluntary by the property owner, and so the ordinance permits a 50% cost share for residential properties, but it allows a neighborhood association to adopt an additional policy where they could further define criteria, and that's exactly what San Jacinto has done, and I'll show that on the second slide. The payment agreements are made through the city for 12 or 18 months. There's no interest that's charged. They're just able to pay this off over time. And if an unpaid balance exists at the end of the payment period, late fees would be assessed, and the agreements are secured by a lien and released upon final payment. Our capital projects and development engineering department would oversee a contract to complete this work. And then on the second slide is just how the San Jacinto neighborhood has further prioritized properties, and I think this is a really cool program, something we've never done here before. So they want to try to help owner occupied households in San Jacinto first, and they're actually going to offer through this initial round, covering 100% of the cost for very low income households. So they're going to have to prove that they meet that income qualification. Those are based on HUD's area income requirements. But if you didn't want to approve your income limits, then documentation isn't required, and you can still apply for the 50% cost share. And then they will consider tenant occupied properties, but they want to limit it to property owners that own no more than three in the neighborhood. And so they've adopted this policy. This is in place by their board. They're actually going to review the applications first, and then they'll come to the city. So it's a really, another really interesting partnership between the city and the neighborhood associations. And that's all I have, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Counsel questions for Emily.
So on an average house in San Jacinto, what is the, what's the cost to either replace or to build a new sidewalk?
So we've estimated between like 15 So we've estimated between like $1,500 and $3,000, just between, like, if there are driveway ramps are included, or they're replacing the whole sidewalk, or just a portion of it. So then it would be, you know, that percentage scale based on...
Okay. Well, I was just asking because it said a maximum of $5,000, so I was just curious exactly what the replacement cost actually was going to be, so.
So based on...
That's on the high end, as a way to just sort of cover, you know, if it's a corner lot or something like that.
So based on what you're saying, at the top end, a resident would have to pay $2,500, but based on your average estimate, it'd be somewhere between $750 and $1,500?
Yeah.
And so, and then, and then you've got a plan for them to have 12 to 18 months interest free to pay that back to the city, their portion?
Yes.
I think that's a pretty great deal, actually.
So Emily, can you talk a little bit about the, about the warranty for the work to be done as far as the sidewalks being replaced, and if so, where do those funds reside?
The, so the, the work is going to be done through like a licensed and bonded contractor. That contract's going to be overseen by the city, and so any of that work would be warranted like any of our other sidewalk improvement projects. There is some, like, there's a buffer in this fund, so even though they've set $200,000 aside, they plan to spend about $180,000, so there'd be some additional funding left to take care of any kind of unforeseen circumstances. And then it's kind of like a revolving loan fund, like as those, as that money comes back in, they'll be able to continue supporting new households in the future.
Right, they could reallocate it to another, another property owner or another project or, okay, thank you.
Of all the residential properties...
I'll get there.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Howard.
Of all the properties in San Jacinto, residential properties, what percentage are owner-occupied?
So I just pulled out...
Emily, can you, pardon my interruption, can, do you mind pulling that microphone? Just maybe straighten it up a little bit more, just, it's not quite as tall as our other microphone, so just...
So I actually looked at that today. I pulled recent data, and...
How'd you know I was gonna ask?
I thought someone might ask that. 37% are owner-occupied, so of all our neighborhood plan areas, San Jacinto has the lowest percentage of owner-occupied properties, and when the plan was adopted, the, the number that we used was 40%. So actually, that number, just even in the short amount of time, is decreasing. And like, one of their primary objectives really is to increase homeownership in the neighborhood, so this is intended to help support that effort.
Thank you.
Question?
Thank you. I was gonna just agree with Eddie. I think this is a good deal, and the thing that I didn't understand yesterday when I asked about it was the, the low income, 100%, that's incorporated in that, so I think it makes it even better. Question that I had for you, do you have anybody on the list already, or has the association given you any inclination as to how many residences are interested in this, or have already signed up?
So they've started doing some promotion of this, but they haven't shared, I think, this, this new tiered approach. So we have about 12 applications currently, and we're actually hoping to do some, like, city-led promotional after this is adopted, and I think that we'll see a lot of interest. But they haven't been promoting the full coverage for that very low income, but I'd be happy to come back and report on that.
Or maybe just something, email, email us. I think it's a great project, and we would love to be kept up to speed on how successful it is. I know four of us live in old neighborhoods with old sidewalks, and so I know our neighborhood, Howard and I live in the same neighborhood, it's struggled to know how to encourage homeowners to work on this, so I think it's great.
Even have a sidewalk. I mean, business doesn't have a ton of sidewalks.
Right, yeah. It's, it's a real issue in our older neighborhoods, so. San Jacinto Neighborhood Association does great work as far as pulling together, working on their problems, prioritizing what they want to start funding, and so they're off to a great start. I'm very pleased with the work that they're doing. I know they're not doing it alone, they're doing it with planning helping them, so good job, Emily.
One more, Emily. So do you know how many homes exist in San Jacinto?
Do you know that, but I don't know it at this moment. I can, I can look at that.
That's okay. The only reason I'm asking is $1,500 per side is about 100, is about 120 homes.
Yeah.
And two, and at the low end, 750 is 240 homes. So I was just curious how many homes. And I know then they're gonna, then over the next year, year and a half, you're gonna have money coming back in to then fund more homes. I was just curious if we knew how many homes were actually in the...
Well, I answered another question for the Barrio today. So there are about 1,600 housing units in the Barrio neighborhood, so just for a point of comparison, yeah.
Will there be renewal funding, or is this a one-time funding of 200,000?
So this is a one-time from there, the Neighborhood Planning Initiative, funding. They've, they have allocated the rest of that to other projects, but I think it's our hope, and I've talked with engineering about this, that this is maybe something we could put in the CIP and fund this, maybe not at this level, but continue funding this. If this is successful, like, we talked about this being a pilot project, if it's successful, try to fund it each year through the CIP.
And are these the types of projects, Jared, that we're looking for, infrastructure funding for Normandy Group to help us find federal funding for? I mean, the fact that we have a project like this in place, this to me feels like something we should be asking either HUD to help us with, or...
Pretty federal.
Yeah, Transportation Department. I mean, this is related to the walkability and the safety of pedestrians in our city, so I definitely want to make sure that a project like this and other neighborhoods who might be interested in a project like this, that it would be prepared in a way that we could look for all sources of federal funding.
Yes, ma'am, there are federal funds available for, exactly for projects like this. So whether it's infrastructure and investment funds, or existing programs that are available, we can absolutely, and especially in areas that are going to meet all the criteria like our, like our target neighborhoods through the neighborhood plan programs, we'll be able to apply for funds like this. I cannot guarantee, but we are going to be very well-prepared through our neighborhood planning process to have projects in the can that we can apply for and guarantee them that we can put these projects in the ground very quickly. So this would be really fertile, fertile, fertile ground for, for grant-seeking.
Yeah, so whoever's keeping that list of things that should go on that federal request?
They are watching this, this meeting right now.
Yeah, exactly.
And have been communicating with us, saying, congratulations, thank you, and we're already working for you.
Okay, good.
So Emily, that money that goes out, and then let's say we've got a, a portion that are going to pay back 50%, and a portion that are going to pay back 25%, will that money that comes back in, will it be earmarked to turn right around and go back out for somebody else's sidewalk?
Yeah, like, it will have its own separate fund, and that's part of having the city process, we can track that, and then they can just spend out of that, again, directly into San Jacinto.
Okay. So this project could slowly deplete itself, but it could go on for several years?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Emily. Do we have a motion with regard to item 3C?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to adopt ordinance number 7979, amending the Amarillo Municipal Code, Chapter 4-6, Article 4, by adding Section 4-6-191 regarding the city's sidewalk cost share program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 3C. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that item passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3D is consideration of ordinance number 7980. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We're going to be talking about a proposed modification or amendment to the Tiers 1 project plan and costs. We're also going to be recapping the conversation with Tiers 1 and their recommendation to the city council, and then answer any questions you have. Andrew Freeman, Assistant City Manager, has a brief presentation, and we're ready to answer any questions you have. Andrew?
Yes, sir. So the Tiers Number, Number 1 Board met last week to consider this item. It was brought forward, as you're all aware, the city council hired Garfield Public Private late, or late last summer to work on public-private partnerships and different opportunities to fund the Civic Center project that we've been working on for the last 10, 10 or so years, and part of that discussion is they've been evaluating the different funding opportunities and different sources of funding, and it was discussed with Garfield. While we haven't yet gotten the final report from them, they have let us know of some of these barriers that would prevent city council from having a full array of financing tools and options to consider to fund this project moving forward. And one of those is that you really need to have the project listed in all your planning documents. Back in 2019, we took action on one of our planning documents, the Downtown Strategic Action Plan. That was adopted in 2008, prior to the needs assessments taking place with the Civic Center. So in 2019, you can see the language there on the right-hand side of the screen. That was added to the Strategic Action Plan, and during our discussions with Garfield, it was recommended that you also need to include in your reinvestment zone language to increase your, your capabilities and your, your toolbox for funding this project. So what has been proposed and what Tiers Number 1 unanimously approved at their meeting last week is just a very simple change to the project plan cost page. I believe it's page 21, 21, I believe, of the agreement, or of the final project plan, was a bullet point that adds expansion and renovation, including the addition of arena to the Amarillo Civic Center complex, as well as improvements to the Amarillo Santa Fe Depot property. And importantly, and part of what we discussed with Tiers 1, was also adding a sentence that it is not anticipated for the cost of these public improvements to be financed with Tiers revenues. And then that's other, further emphasized later in that section, where it says the total estimated cost of the above public initiative is intended to be financed by the proposed revenue, or financed by the Tiers revenues, deleting proposed, is not changed. So that $34 million net present value or $102 million gross, that's from the original final project plan from back in 2006. So this is not proposed to make any major changes. All it is, is a, a simple change to identify the project, to allow complete flexibility. Once you all receive the report from Garfield, to consider any and all options moving forward.
Council questions for Andrew? No? Okay. We don't have a public hearing on this one, do we?
No, ma'am, we do not.
So all we need then is a motion on ordinance number 7980.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7980, which amends the project plans and costs as originally adopted by ordinance number 7076, and amended by ordinance number 7578, as stated within the tax increment reinvestment zone number 1, City of Amarillo, Texas, final project and financing plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 7980. Any questions or discussion about the motion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3E is to consider acceptance of the Harrington Cancer and Health Foundation Safe Kids Grant. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We've got Casey Stotan with us today, I believe, or Laura Storrs, to talk about Harrington Cancer and Health Foundation Safe Kids Grant. This is a grant that we started working on before COVID, and the whole purpose of this grant is to protect kids from prevent, preventable injuries. So I believe Casey's in the House, but I just don't know exactly where she is.
She is, she's in the overflow room.
Okay.
So if we'll give her just a second.
We'll give her just one moment.
And I'll steal her thunder for just a second, but this is something that they...
It's in the overflow.
Do you have, no. That's very true. So this is something that they have been working on, they were working on pre-COVID and kind of paused it, and then because they had a lot of things that came on their plate when COVID arose, and so this is a big win for these organizations coming together on this grant, just to help keep our kids safe from preventable injuries that do unfortunately hurt and take lives of children every year. So with that, hopefully Casey will be...
So does this grant mean that Howard has to stop running with scissors?
I think that is a safe thing. I, I mentioned, or not eat any of the laundry detergent pods, or, you know, some of the...
Use sunscreen.
Use sunscreen, you know, wear a hat when going out.
I think it is important to note, we have gotten a lot of money to assist with COVID planning, COVID prevention, et cetera. This is not a COVID-related grant, and really has nothing to do with COVID. Casey?
You know, it went much faster than I think we...
I don't know, we were efficient.
Trent and I were watching from the back, and so I do appreciate you considering this item today. We have been working with the Harrington Health and Cancer Foundation for about two years on this grant, and COVID did kind of get in our way a little bit, as I think it's gotten in everyone's way, but we are really excited about this project. So we will be able to work with Harrington Health and Cancer Foundation on developing a Safe Kids program, and the Safe Kids program really targets all children, parents, caregivers, to provide education on child passenger safety, fire safety, home safety, pedestrian safety, water safety, sports safety, safe sleep, and wheel sports safety. So really targeting unintentional injuries. Safe Kids Worldwide has helped reduce the US childhood death rate from unintentional injury by 57%. So I'm really excited to have, have their support, kind of as an overarching network of providers and different coalitions, as well as what we'll be able to build here. So I think it'll be really a good thing.
What kind of metrics will you track?
So, so many of these things that we talked about, the different safety topics, we'll be able to provide additional car seats and cribs to families, you know, the traditional, like, helmet rodeos that you see, but really it'll be coalition building. So we'll work with partners that are already in, kind of working in this realm to pull, to pull those things together. So kind of yet to, yet to come on, on exactly what metrics, but I think definitely, certainly those numbers. The, in the 2018 Community Health Assessment, infant mortality...
It seems so long ago.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
The infant mortality was identified as a huge priority in our community. So the state rate for infant mortality is 5.48 infant deaths per 100 births, I'm sorry, 1,000 births. In some, in some of our ZIP codes, we have infant mortality upwards of 18.36 per 1,000 births. So hopefully, over time, we'll see infant mortality go down closer to that state rate, or even below. That would be our goal.
Well, I know that Jennifer does a great job with her program, and just speaking about coalition building.
Right.
Y'all have had some real headway in the last three or four months about some community partners working with her, and she has great resources and, and great messaging. It's just a matter of getting it out into the people who need it, need to hear it.
Absolutely.
Any questions for Casey, counsel? Okay, thank you, Casey. Do we have motion with regard to 3E?
Yes, Mayor, I move to accept the Safe Kids Grant that will be awarded by the Harrington Cancer and Health Foundation in the amount of $180,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 3E. Any further questions or discussion on the motion?
I wanted to say, Mayor, I left my scissors at the office.
Well, we're all relieved to hear that. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes with a 5-0 vote. And that brings us to the end of our action item and into executive session. At this time, I'd ask the city attorney to read our dismissal language.
Yes, ma'am. So the Texas Open Meetings Act closed session, the Amarillo City Council was announced on May 10, 2022, at 3:55 PM under the following authority, Section 551.087... authority, Section 551.087, discuss commercial financial information received from existing business or business prospect, which the city is negotiating for the location or retention of a facility, or for incentives the city is willing to extend or financial information submitted by the same. Thank you.